All right, Director Lazara, if you want to start.
Sure, okay. Welcome to the November 16th, 2020, Passaic County Board of Freeholders. We'll start with a roll call.
Freeholders, Opter.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best. Freeholder Best. Freeholder Duffy.
Yes.
Ames.
Here.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lazara.
Here. Clerk, could you do the announcement of the open public meeting?
Take notice, the public, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders on January 6, 2020, adopted resolution number 20R 2020-0001, which calls for the location of the conference of regular meetings scheduled for Tuesday, I'm sorry, for Monday, November 16, 2020, at 5:30 and 6:00 PM respectively. Due to state of emergency, the public health emergency declared by New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy and set forth an executive order 103 and further limitations on public gatherings set forth in executive order 104, the board will hold their regular meeting virtually via Facebook Live and Cisco Webex. Additionally, pursuant to administrative order 20-01 issued by Passaic County Administrator, closing the administration building to non-essential personnel in public effect of March 18, 2020, at 8:30 AM. The board is canceling the conference agendas for these meetings and shall hold the regular meeting at 5:30 with no members public physically present and authorizing, authorized under NJSA 20, I'm sorry, 10, colon, 4-12A. If a member of the public wishes to place a public comment on the record, please email public@passaiccountyNJ, stating your name and address, no later than, no address and matter to be addressed by the board, no later than November 16, 2020, at 5:00 PM respectively, and by participating at Facebook Live at facebook.com/passaiccountyNJ. The clerk of the board shall read same into the public record. Moreover, some members of the board may participate telephonically pursuant to the board's bylaws and compliance with NJSA 10, colon, or 12-1 at sec. Official action will be taken. This was published in the Herald News and the Bergen Record, and I'll file with the county clerk.
Thank you. Could we have the invocation, please?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious to bless thy servants, our freeholders in this county of Passaic, that thy people may well in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. And Freeholder Duffy, would you like to just give a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. To the flag.
The United States of America.
In the republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Deliberate.
Justice.
Justice.
Thank you. And could we just have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces? Thank you. Okay, we are going to have a couple of presentations tonight. So the first one, I'd like to introduce Jordan Glad, former mayor of Summit, New Jersey, and Nicholas J. Platt, former mayor and committee member of Harding, New Jersey. They have been appointed as shared services czars by our governor Phil Murphy, and I would like to welcome them tonight, and we look forward to your presentation.
And just for a record there, Director, it's going to take Mike just a couple minutes to link them up. So there's just going to be a little lag here.
It's Jordan Glad here. Stick Platt on?
Not, not yet, I believe.
Yeah, I don't actually see Mr. Platt in the list of attendees right now.
Okay, but Rick Riccadella, you have, right?
Yep, I'm going to bring him in right now.
Great, so we'll punt without Nick.
Okay.
Director, while we're kind of waiting to, we should recognize the passing of Mayor Don Levy this past week as well. I'm sorry, I tried to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great loss to this county and to everybody else. He was a wonderful person, a great man.
We present both Mr. Glad and Mr. Riccadella in the.
So we're good to go?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Great. Well, thank you for having us. As, I'm Jordan Glad, I'm the former mayor of Summit, and I am one of the two shared services co-czars that was appointed by Governor Murphy 18 months ago. This is kind of a unique title, as you can imagine, for the state in that we were appointed as volunteers and we report directly to the governor for this challenge. And we've been, Nick and I have been traveling thousands of miles back up and visiting municipalities and counties throughout the state, trying to convince them the importance of sharing services. One of the things, you know, one of the little things is we've learned is, in history, I'll tell you, is czars have died painful deaths in the past, and we're trying to avoid that as we go to community, to community. The program started when the governor was asked during one of the debates how he was going to pay for all his programs, to which he said, I was going to appoint a shared services czar. Shortly after being elected, he realized that in order for this to be a success, it needs to be a bipartisan effort. Therefore, he wound up appointing myself, the Democrat, and Nick, the Republican, to accomplish this task. As, I want to be very clear that when we talk about shared services, you won't hear us say one word about consolidation. We feel that those efforts have failed in the past, and, you know, in 50 years, we've had one consolidation within New Jersey. That would be Princeton and Princeton Borough. So the strength of, we realize the strength of home rule. We also appreciate the amount of shared services that Passaic County has been doing as well. In theory, if you think about it, counties are really the ultimate shared service, right? You're a larger entity coordinating services amongst all your municipalities, and we commend you for that. One of the things, so this, for the first, I'd say, six months, we just visited with towns to figure out what are we going to do and how we're going to attack this program. I'm pleased to report today, we have over 1,000 shared services under our belt, and they're growing exponentially each month. But one of the things that's key to the program is being former mayors, we don't want to ride into a town and tell the community how they should do it. Who are we to dictate, if you will? Not that we have that authority, but to dictate how a community or a mayor should run their town. What we're here to do is help expedite the effort. One of the things we do have is money in terms of grants, and Rick Riccadella, who's with me tonight, is going to talk about those programs for yourselves and the communities you serve. One of the requirements that we require each community to, before we'll even go and work with a town, is both parties, whether it's a county and a community, or the two neighboring communities who want to share services, that they each pass a resolution that they are willing to enter into the conversation. We learned really early on, you may have one willing partner, but without the second, you're just wasting time and money. So with that, I'm going to let Rick walk through some of the grant menu that's available. So I understand you guys have a tight agenda tonight, and we'll try and move as fast as possible through this. But thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Rick?
Good. I guess I'm on. No, still no camera or just voice?
It appears just to be voice right now, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm using the state computer. I don't know what the problem is. But anyway, thank you for having us. As Jordan stated, the other czar is not with us tonight, Nick, who is from Harding Township and a previous mayor. One of the things that I like to emphasize is that I'm a retired police chief and now a bureau chief at the state, and we run the local assistance bureau that runs the shared service division. And we've made some leaps and bounds since the implementation of the czars into the program. In fact, since 2018, we've done a little over 1,500 shared service agreements. Sorry about that, people. One of the major ones that we've just done recently was the one up in Morris County and Sussex, where we implemented a inmate sharing program, something that maybe the county freeholders may want to look into down the line, where they're sharing the facility in Morris County because with the new bail program, they don't have to hold the prisoners that long. So that would be up on to slide, I think it's slide five, Mitch, if you want to move up to that one. Correct. The other one that we'd like to talk about is capital sharing, which is important when it comes to programs that we deal with, with street sweepers, snow removal, where the county can help out some of the municipalities. Key positioning would be tax collectors, municipal clerks, and department mergers. We've seen, I've already previously told you about Morris County and Sussex County, but they've also done code enforcement, fire inspection, and municipal courts. And in fact, if Nick was on the call right now, he'd be telling you about the Madison program that we have in place with five courts working up there for the presentation of their regional court system that they have working. Next slide. This is the slide that indicates that we've done almost 1,500 shared services since the implementation of the czars under the Murphy administration. Next slide. This is a little background on how well Passaic County is doing, and we want to give some kudos to the county freeholders or as the new law in place commissioners with Passaic County doing a lot of different programs with West Milford, Clifton, and Patterson. And I noticed that Passaic, Passaic County participated in one of our grant programs for the medical examiner's office between Bergen and Essex. So that's going to be quite a program that is going to be in place for them to examine the bodies at one location and saving all those funds for those three different counties. Nick?
You know.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't know who was speaking. Hi.
It was Rick.
Hi, Rick, how are you? Anthony Denova, I'm the county administrator. One of the, one of the things not on this slide, which has probably been our biggest shared services, we had closed our youth detention center in 2009 and merged with Essex County, which was for Passaic County, a $10 million savings a year. So just as a matter of public record, I just wanted to point that out as well.
Well, thank you, Anthony, for bringing that to our attention. Again, I don't know when that, when that took place, but was the agreement ever sent down to?
It should have been, it was over 10 years. We closed in April of 2009.
Okay. Because we have a repository for all the grants and the agreements, and what we did was we put a map together based on that. So we'll make sure that we.
If you, if there's an email or something that we should send that to, we certainly can do that as well.
The email is on the last slide on this presentation. You can send it down to my attention.
Perfect, thank you.
We can move to the next slide about the grants. As Jordan was talking about earlier, we implemented, the governor gave us $10 million to implement grants for the shared service program. Last year, we used $1.5 million. This year, the governor Murphy's administration has administered $10 million for us, and there's three different grant programs, challenge, implementation, and the county administrators coordinators program. And the next slide will explain what the challenge grant is. Challenge is the grant where you just think about outside the box. And again, you guys thought outside the box when you applied for the LEAP grant for the medical examiner's office. So you should be very proud of that program. You're doing a feasibility study on it now. So you have, again, one location that'll do the autopsies on the bodies that are taken into custody. And we've given $150,000 towards that project. The next grant process implementation, that's kind of an easy one, stall costs, rebranding costs, anything of that sort that deals with the grant process. Again, it can be up to $150,000, and we also included any school, regional, regionalization or feasibility studies in the implementation. And the last one is the county coordinator. $50,000 we pay for their salary. The counties pick up the fringe benefits with regard to it, and we have six participating counties this round, and we're going to be doing a two-day orientation down in Trenton, and it's going to be sponsored by the local assistance bureau. Again, the local assistance bureau is part of the shared service program that we have in place. Next slide. These are some of the success stories on the slides that we have, that we have in place. This slide indicates that in, we have one in Chesterfield for a fire district. Dennis Township, we're doing something between a board of ed and the town with a lift program. Lambertville is doing an economic development program. North Wildwood is doing emergency services. We've spoken about Sussex and Morris with the jail consolidation. We have another one going on with Roxbury and Mine Hill for the board of ed. And as you can see, we have the medical examiner's office for Bergen, Hudson, and Passaic for the medical examiner. And then those are the counties that are participating, and kudos to Passaic County as you're going to be sending a representative down to partner with the state, and we're going to be their point of contact. So if they ever need any help with any of the programs, we'll be their point of contact, and they can contact us. And as I stated earlier, we'll be doing a two-day orientation with regard to them. Next page. One thing that we wanted to emphasize that I like to mention in our slide presentations is that we conduct feasibility studies for free, and I like to mention the word free because in today's day and age, not too many things are free. And our director, Melanie Walter, is a visionary with regard to our program at local government services, and she's implemented the local assistance bureau and provides about a dozen experts that we have on file to help with municipalities, whether it's dealing with the administration, dealing with code enforcement, if it's health department, whatever it might be, we have the experts on board, fire prevention, that can help you do these programs. And I think one of the things that we want to emphasize as you as county freeholders, that maybe you want to mention this to your constituents, the mayors and council people in Passaic, that we have these free programs that you can contact my office, and we'll send somebody out. Just a simple letter from a mayor asking for our assistance helps out with doing the program. One of the other things that we like to mention is that we provide political support for the tough decisions, and we know that sometimes these are very, very tough decisions with home rule. So Nick and Jordan run right to the forefront on those things and lead from the front when it comes to making these tough decisions for shared services as they've walked through those paths also as previous mayors. And as Jordan likes to say, that they took the heat in the beginning, but a year later, nobody ever came back to them and complimented them for the work that they put in place. The other thing that we mentioned already is we have a mentorship with the local assistance bureau where we have point of contact, where anybody who needs any type of expertise, we have those individuals on board. And we've already announced some of the successes that we have in place. Next slide. And it's the local assistance bureau. And Anthony, there is my email and the phone numbers for the czars if you need to get in touch with them, or email me down at sharedservices@nj.gov. Any questions that we might have from any of the freeholders that might want to ask us anything with regard to our program?
I guess not.
We used to have a, I think one of our previous directors, Tim Cunningham, used to be assistant director up there in our assistant BA up in Passaic County.
Yes, he was.
Did he work for you, Anthony?
He did, yep.
Yep, yeah, yep. He worked with me in Camden in the governor's office.
Yeah, he's a very good man.
He left us to go to the governor's office.
Yep.
One of the things, Rick, and I don't know, because this is probably bigger than everyone, one of the things that I think prevents a lot of shared service is the Uniform Shared Services Consolidation Act, where when employees lose their job due to a shared service, the entity has to pay a, I guess they call it a terminal leave, I think.
Yes.
And to me, you know, we always talk about the savings of, and we did it, when we closed the detention center, we did it to a tune of about three quarters of a million dollars. Now, the savings for us was so tremendous that we were able to absorb it. But I think a lot of times, it prevents entities from seriously looking at the, not just the low-hanging fruit, right? That's the easy stuff. It's the consolidations of, you know, again, a youth detention center that is significant, but could prevent people from doing it because of that, that one piece of the Uniform Shared Service Consolidation Act. Has there ever been talk of revisiting that or possibly amending the legislation?
Not amending the legislation, but I can tell you that we have visited it, and in our administration, we have provided some soft landings for people. When we did combined police departments, or we did sheriff's office, to give you an example, up in Sussex and Morris County, many of the correctional officers ended up going to Essex and Hudson County to work. What happens is the, we put out the word that these individuals will need employment, and they end up getting picked up. When we did Lake Como and Belmar, three of the officers went over to Belmar. Some of them went to the sheriff's office and some went to the prosecutor's office. So we do try to find soft landings for these individuals. I know it's hard. I know you don't want to pay these severance packages, and it causes an issue to each of these individuals, plus it puts a bad taste in the mouth of the people who are doing it.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's as much as you don't want to pay it, but I think sometimes when you're looking at the, the, you know, cost analysis of it, it, you know, it makes it more difficult to really do it, because at the end of the day, you're not saving a lot. I, you know, I can only talk to my experience with the detention center. The savings was so great that we did it anyway. But, you know, I can imagine there are other shared services where, you know, it's kind of a balancing act, and to have to pay that money out.
As Nick said.
Becomes another reason not to do it in a state where, you know, it's a simple, the concept of shared service is simple, and we've been talking about it forever, but it makes it more difficult when you put, you know, the more hurdles you put in front of elected officials and administrators like myself, the more difficult it is to actually get it done.
I will say, this administration has been very aggressive in terms of trying to find soft landings, which has helped.
And we did that, too. I mean, we did that. We had open houses at Essex County and, you know, a few employees that were close to retirement, we found them, you know, jobs within the county so that they can get to their 25 years. Obviously, it was pre-chapter 78, but get to their 25 years so that they can, you know, get their free health benefits. But I just throw it out there as a conversation, because I do see it as an issue, you know, preventing people from looking at shared services more.
I'd be interested to know how many of the sheriff's officers in Sussex County didn't have a very big jail to begin with. How many people didn't get jobs? Um. Or lost their jobs, and how many people lost their pensions as opposed, because of not finding a job? Do you have those, that data available?
There weren't that many from.
Many. I'm asking you for a number, not that there weren't that many.
I would say, I would say 11. There was 100, I don't have the documents right now, but we started out with 108. We went down to 38, and 11 of them, we weren't able to place anyplace. And I'll tell you, another thing that we tried to do, which was interesting, is I went to the police training commission as a former police chief and asked them if we could convert those correctional officers over to police officer to put them into the rank and file, and they said they had passed a law in 2008 that prohibited us from doing that. Because I know when I was a chief, I took a correctional officer and sent them back to the academy for a couple of weeks, and he became a certified police officer.
It's my belief they can do that again. You're talking about the waiver, and I think that they started doing that again.
The waivers for waving them up from correctional officers to police officers?
Yes, they have to go back to the academy for certain things. But yes, that's my understanding that that's back. You can check it and just let us know.
We, we tried to implement that up in Sussex. Again, this happened in 2019. Maybe it's changed since the COVID. But I will check into it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be curious, because that's actually important.
No, I know. We brought it up a couple of times.
I appreciate that.
Okay, well, we thank you. If no one else has any other questions, we have to move on with our agenda, but we thank you for the presentation. And I guess we'll all get a copy of the PowerPoint that you showed tonight.
Yes.
Yeah. We appreciate that.
Anthony, send that down to me so I can put it on the record.
Yep, Anthony, you're muted.
Yes, Rick, we'll send that down to you tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. Okay, we do have, actually do have a packed schedule tonight, and right now, we're going to move on to the public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the announcement. In order to do this, we're also going to have six comments that will be read into the record as we move forward with the public hearing. So with that, clerk, could you please read the public hearing?
This, thank you, Director. This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public on the intentions of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic to sell 40,642 square foot feet or 0.933 acre parcel, 4.417 plus minus feet on the east side of Church Lane Jug Handle and 31.54 plus or minus feet on Church Lane, Wayne, New Jersey Block 2704 Lot 23 in the township of Wayne. The purpose of this proposed sale is to provide the adjacent contiguous landowner DJK Property LLC with additional property to construct parking to support the operations of the adjacent property. This vacant parcel does not function as part of the roadway and is overgrown with vegetation. The parcel is too small to subdivide or build upon. The Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. The pub, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders are holding this public hearing during the regular meeting tonight, Monday, November 16th, 2020 at 5:40 PM virtually at the Passaic County Administration Building, 401 Grand Street Patterson, New Jersey, oh seven, five oh five. The public hearing was published in the Herald News on October 17th, 2020 and the Wayne today on October 22nd, 2020. Public is invited virtually to participate in the public hearing and offer comment or provide written comment on the proposed property sale. Period for public to provide such comment will commence upon receipt of this notice and shall remain open until two weeks after the public hearing, which will close uh close of business on December 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. Could I have a, we have a girl call?
Freeholders, actor.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
Deputy Director LaCour.
Here.
Director Lazara.
Here.
Uh, could we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Doug, uh, Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director LaCour.
Yes.
Director Lazara.
Yes, as I mentioned before, uh, we do have six comments that will be read into the record. Uh, if there's anyone else wishing to be heard, uh, once we read these letters into the record, you can be heard.
Uh, okay, the first, the first uh first record uh being read into the um to the papers is, "Good morning, uh, this is At Waters. It has been brought to my attention that the surrounding neighbors and homeowners that uh above reference one acre lot currently zoned residential has been proposed to be turned into a parking lot which will serve the current building located 967 Hamburg Turnpike on Wayne and owned by DJK Property LLC. The issues that this present presents to the surrounding area is of major concern. It will uh deplete the lovely residential area of much needed noise barrier from traffic on Hamburg Turnpike. It will displace the natural wildlife that habit habitats uh habitats the force forcing the animals onto Hamburg Turnpike with potential causing fatal car accidents. Since outdoor lighting will be required due to zoning requirements for parking lots, these lights will shine directly into the homes of David Scott uh Drive, causing disruption to the quality of life and our privacy. It will affect the property values of the adjacent homes. Since this proposed one acre parking lot will lack frontage, will be landlocked, it will not be patrolled or monitored by local police department and therefore creating possible security risks of homes that are adjacent to a lot. Due to the reasons listed above, we strongly oppose the rezoning. Thank you for your time and efforts that have been made by the Passaic County Deputy County to stop this rezoning. Best regards, Stephanie Rushnick, 10 uh Fall Four Mo Place."
I picked my nose. I don't want.
Oh, oh.
Uh, the the second public comment came uh from Anthony John Pasalacqua.
Council, could I just interrupt one second? I just want to make it clear as we go through these that that the county is only selling this parcel. Any zoning change has to be done by the township of Wayne. So I just don't want anybody to be confused that this is a zoning issue. This is purely the county trying to sell uh an excess parcel of land that has no value to us. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. The second public comment came uh on November 15th, 2020 at 7:03 PM from Anthony John Pasalacqua. Uh, "Dear Deputy County Council All Waters, my name is Anthony J. Pasalacqua and I live, I I have lived at 58 David Scott Drive, Wayne, New Jersey for over 25 years. When I was looking to purchase my home, I purposely searched for a quiet residential street and the wooded area behind my home was what sold me on the property. The wildlife turned out to be an added bonus. The wooded area in question not only enhances the beauty of my property, but more importantly, acts as a sound buffer against the noisy traffic on Hamburg Turnpike. I strongly oppose and object to the sale of this wooded area as it will without a doubt devalue my property. The destruction of this wooded area for construction of any type and in particular a parking lot as proposed by DJK Property LLC will create major issues regarding the security of my home and property and upset the peacefulness in my neighborhood and wildlife, which I've come to enjoy for over 25 years. The construction of a parking lot in the wooded area will will undoubtedly bring about unwanted harsh light lighting illuminating my yard and at and home at night. Individuals hanging out at all hours of the day and night and patrons coming and going in in and out of the parking lot should a retail store or food establishment be erected, making my home and property more susceptible to break-ins and vandalism. Your assistance in preventing this travesty is greatly appreciated. Thank you and regards, A.J. Pasalacqua."
Okay. Uh, the third uh came in on on Sunday, November 15th, 2020 at 9:12 PM uh from Laura Montenegro on "Dear, dear Miss Alt Waters, I'm writing in regards to the proposed private sale and and land located between Church Lane Jug Handle and Church Lane, which is listed as residential. I would like to register my protest against the sale of the empty lot Block 2704 Lot 23 to DJ uh K Property LLC owned by Mr. David Ezra. From the paperwork filed by DJK and Ezra have proposed to buy this parcel and are planning to make a parking lot on this land to facilitate another property owned by DJK, which is zoned commercial. The aforementioned block 2704 Lot 23 needs to be rezoned needs to be rezoned and also making it a commercial property. Res zoning this parcel would take away from the uh feeling of the area. It would no longer maintain the quiet, family-oriented residential environment. I'm also concerned that this sale would devalue my property and other properties in this section. It's my understanding that DJK and Ezra also own three properties along the same stretch of Hamburg Turnpike. It is close to 2.5 acres with the sale. It will lead someone to wonder what is the final objective of DJK and Ezra? It seems as if there is a prelude to something more extensive than just a parking lot. Having a huge parking lot near an acre on the parcel which changed the entire integrity of the dynamics of this quiet neighborhood. From the papers uh papers filed, the paper lot uh is to use by 987 Hamburg Turnpike and somewhat small building, which already has 14 spots. I'm alt, unfortunately, not knowing the real plans for all of DJK and Ezra properties is very detrimental to all residents in the area. There will be a bright lights in residential area. People might start to congregate at night. There will could be issues with trash and could bring rodents and additional noise, just to mention a few cons of the parking lot. Also, any animals that live in the area would be displaced and there would be not be enough displacement of animals in Wayne, not to mention the trees that will be cut down. Would this be environmental issue? I understand Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders is trying to act in best interest of Passaic County. Unfortunately, I do not think that this is the best interest of the of this quiet residential community, along with the surrounding areas. I find it interesting that there was no for sale sign as and we as residents did not know this parcel was available for sale. Actually, when I bought my house 20 years ago, I remember being told that the property could not be sold and belonged to the county. Again, I strongly protest the sale and hope that this does not get approval for the sake of all residents living in the lovely neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Laura Montenegro."
The fourth uh public comment came in uh on November 14th at 4:16 PM from Rosemary Kalella. "Dear Miss All Waters and the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, we live at 56 David Scott Drive in Wayne, New Jersey and are directly connected to Block 2704 Lot 23 of which is being proposed for sale to DJK Properties LLC. We would like to strongly protest the sale of the empty lot Block 2704 Lot 23 for the purpose of a parking lot. According to the registered letter we received dated October 16th, 2020. We see no reason that the 967 Hamburg Turnpike property needs a one acre parking lot expansion into this parcel. Block Block 2704 Lot 23, the 967 Hamburg Turnpike property is a small one-story building that already has 14 parking spots available and is never full and is rarely used. This building used to be a dentist's office before it was recently sold. There are no residents and the current tenant is a religious group that we only saw on weekends during the summer when they used the lot parking lot for a flea market. Otherwise, it is vacant. We have a direct line of sight into the back of 967 Hamburg Turnpike building. This lot Block 274, 2704 Lot 23 has been has been vacant as far back as Wayne Township records show and for good reason. It is a landlocked property and it is a natural barrier to noise and traffic from Hamburg Turnpike and the jug handle for six residential properties that are continuous to Block 2704 Lot 23. There is numerous wildlife that live in the property and that have been displaced from other wooded areas nearby that have been developed. Not to mention the 50-plus trees that would have to be cut down to build a parking lot. This sale would also bring a parking lot up to the backside back or side of our properties with all the associated movement of cars, people, noise and bright lights into our backyards. This would also be a secluded, this would also be a secluded area that people could congregate at night, causing a multitude of other issues. We are extremely concerned this proposed sale and development will devalue all properties that are continuous in surrounding Block 2704 Lot 23. Block 2704 Lot 23 is zoned as R15 residential and could not have a parking lot built without without a variance to rezone from Wayne Township Planning Board, all of which are all affected neighbors would vehemently oppose and seek legal counsel to represent us. We know the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders is trying to act in the act in the best interest of Passaic County. This proposed sale would not be in the best interest of anyone in the neighborhood except DJK Properties LLC, which obviously has a bigger plan in mind to develop 967 Hamburg Turnpike and three adjacent properties they already purchased under other LLCs. Uh, parentheses Connor Property Management LLC and under his own name parentheses David Ezra on Hamburg Turnpike. This is unacceptable and we strongly recommend you do not approve this sale. We appreciate your consideration to our extreme opposition to the sale of Block 2704 Lot 23 to DJK Properties LLC. Giovanni and Rosemary Kalella, 56 David Scott Drive, Wayne, New Jersey."
Okay, uh, this message came from Antonio Silabella to Nataja At Waters on the sale uh on Saturday, November 14th, 2020 at 5:10 uh PM. Uh, to Mrs. Miss Outwaters and the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. We live at 52 David Scott Drive in Wayne and are now are now townhouses down from uh two two houses down from Block 2704 Lot 23, which is up for sale by DJK Properties LLC. My wife and I would strongly like to disagree and protest the sale of of empty lot Block 2704 Lot 23 for the purpose of an one acre parking lot. We do not find the necessary that the property at 967 Hamburg Turnpike, which already has 14 spot parking lot expanded to a one acre parking lot. The property has been vacant in Wayne Township records for years and years. The natural landscape of the wooded area acts as a sound barrier to Hamburg Turnpike, which consists of traffic in all vehicles 24/7. Also, the fact that the unnecessary parking lot would destroy the home to multiple different wildlife and destroy trees for absolutely no reason. Also, the sale of this property would bring unnecessary patrons of the day and night to park and hang out for no reason. It would bring bright unwanted lights. Also, the sale of the property would bring devalue of properties in this area for no reason. All the neighbors and family of this area strongly oppose the sale and would seek legal counsel to represent us to fight the sale. We all strongly disapprove of this sale. Sincerely, the family of 52 David Scott Drive."
Uh, the sixth public comment came uh on November 16th, 2020 at 11:44 AM from Mary Gore. "I was recently advised by my neighbor of a huge concern regarding a property acquisition. I never received any notice of intention. I live on Level 11 Fernal Place Block 2704 Lot 13, which is a few hundred feet away from the proposed sale of property owned by Passaic County to DJK Properties LLC at 967 Hamburg Turnpike. I strongly oppose the sale of the empty lot for the purpose of a parking lot. Here are my reasons. One acre landlocked property, natural barrier to noise and traffic for our homes from the four lane traffic on Hamburg Turnpike. Hamburg Turnpike continues increasing in volume of cars, autos, trucks, motorcycles and ambulances. Acreage is a haven for natural wildlife. Township of Wayne recently lost over seven acres of natural environment to new strip mall across the street where Trader Joe's is anchored. Continued risk to displace natural wildlife. Over 50-plus trees would need to be cut down. Secluded area will change the solitude of our properties. As for 967 Hamburg Turnpike property proposal to acquire the acreage for a parking lot. Current 967 Hamburg Turnpike location is a small one-story building. Existing parking lot for 14 parking spaces currently available. Parking lot is never full for current usage. This property does not require an acre of land for additional parking spaces. Current usage should not replace our natural environment of wood area. Proposed acquisition is currently zoned as residential. Owner would apply for rezoning to commercial use and is also owner of other properties next to location. Proposed parking lot would require commercial illuminated lights. Proposal will have activity of cars at all hours of evening disturbing our quiet area. Proposal brings noise concern as this property abuts neighbors' homes property. This proposal brings safety issues as this acreage is secluded between many homes and behind the existing building. This acquisition will devalue property values. DJK Property also owns all three parcels of land to the left leading to Fernal Place. With this purchase, DJK can apply for a variance to rezone the entire strip of properties owned to Fernal Place and redevelop this area for commercial use. Wayne does not need any more strip malls. We need to fill our existing empty stores along Hamburg Turnpike. I am hoping that the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders acts in the best interest of Passaic County and its residents, not its business connections. This proposed sale would not be in the best interest of residents in the neighborhood. This purchase makes no sense to the quality of life issue. How was this land even up for sale without any notification? DJK Properties LLC seems to have a bigger plan in mind to develop this area for commercial use and destroy our quiet neighborhood. This neighborhood must not succumb to continued overdevelopment, especially in Wayne. Let's preserve our our natural environment. As a homeowner in the immediate area and who resides at 11 Fernal Place, this purchase of land is unacceptable and I strongly oppose the approval. I strongly oppose the approval on the sale of this property. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Mary Gore, 11 Fernal Place, Wayne, New Jersey. Zero seven four seven zero."
Director, I have an additional comment uh from a Dot Hogan and I will read that into the record and then Micah has access to to uh, I believe, access to some that I cannot see. So I'll read Dot Hogan. Came in at 6:13 today. Uh, "Your action of selling this property will directly impact the local residents. David Ezra owns an adjacent property that will likely convert this commercial strip into unwanted strip mall. Please note, none, none of this, none of the local residents even knew about this property was for sale." Micah, can you help with the others? I can't see those.
I have a question that was posted by Mary Gore. Mr. De Nova said this property has no value to Passaic County. I beg to differ. This property is extremely valuable to the residents of this neighborhood.
Is that all the comments? Okay. Um, are there any other questions, concerns? Mr. De Nova, just to clarify, it's zoned residential now and any changes would have to come through the technical one? Yes?
If I could just interrupt, if we could just close the public portion, assuming there's no more public comments and then we could have this discussion.
Sure. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Steph, we have a, I apologize, we do have two hands up right now in the audience from Mr. Richard Brummel and Alora Montenegro. So would you, would you care if I uh if I unmute them one at a time?
I have no questions. I don't know.
Mr. Brummel, you are presently unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, that's great. My battery's running out. Uh, I live in uh Pottin Lakes. I became aware of this from one of the residents. I've been active in uh trying to save open space in uh uh in Wayne and uh, which is part of Passaic County, obviously. You know, I I my battery's almost out. I apologize, but um I think it's probably a You know, I, my battery's almost out, I apologize, but, um, I think it's probably objectionable and I think in the, in the next, uh, month or so that the, the, uh, comments will be received. The, the board needs to really take so consideration of all the brilliant comments that you've heard from these, um, laymen who really tore apart the, uh, the whole, uh, proposal and, uh, you know, this is a, it's, it's a critical environmental issue that, that this, these residential areas throughout Passaic County are being destroyed. And you just have to drive through, there's very little left. These people are telling you what needs to be done and I, I urge you to listen to them. And I'll make, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. But just so everyone knows, if you're going to speak, you have three minutes. Um, and then it's going to be muted again. Is there anyone else, Micah?
We also have a comment from Laura Montenegro.
Okay.
Uh, Director, for the, for the record, we did read Laura Montenegro's, uh, uh, comments, full comments into the, into the record.
That was one of the letters?
Correct.
Question though, hello?
Ms. Montenegro, you're presently unmuted.
I unmuted? I was muted before. I'm just curious, was there any notice that this property was for sale? I think in my letter I said when I actually bought this house. I, I was told that this would not be sold because it was owned by the county and, and it was a nice, a nice thing that it wouldn't be sold. So excuse me, where was it posted that it's available for sale?
Yes, Ms. Montenegro, once you're done with your comment, we'll, we'll address your question after we close the public portion.
But does that mean whoever's on here will not hear the answer? Residents on here, they won't hear the answer to this?
Oh, no, everyone will hear the answer. That's, that's watching.
Oh, okay. I've never been on this before. I, I apologize.
It's for all of us. Don't, don't worry.
Okay, we have another comment from Ms. Julie Ezra. Ma'am, Ms. Ezra, you are unmuted right now.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Uh, my name is Julie Ezra, excuse me, and I am the managing member of DJK Property. Um, I've been a resident of Wayne for over twenty four years. My husband and I both still reside in Wayne and we own and operate a small business here as well. Um, I appreciate the freeholders' willingness to, um, sell the parcel to us. Um, our main reason for purchasing the parcel is to assemble it with our property to create more value for our property. It is a landlocked parcel that cannot be accessed by any other property other than our own. And, um, I respect and, um, I heard, I respect everyone's opinion and I know I respect their concern and confusion about how the parcel would be used. Um, I believe there was maybe some miscommunication, but we currently have no plans, um, drawn up to develop the property. Although that is, you know, a potential in the next two to five years. Um, I can imagine, um, you know, that the county will make good use of the proceeds of this sale. But right now we do not have any formal plans to develop the property. We really are looking to assemble it to add value and possibly expand the parking lot in the current existing structure. Um, I, I, I highly respect and understand the concerns of all the residents that are, um, you know, commenting here. And I, I do want to let them know that there, there are such things as setbacks in the buffer zones. So, um, you know, we have no intention of mowing down all those trees and we have no intention of destroying, you know, the, any of the natural, um, or all of the natural space there. So, um, I just wanted to make myself heard and let everyone know that I hear what they're saying, but I also appreciate the freeholders. Um, you know, considering the purchase and, um, I think that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We also have a comment from a Hans Hogan. Mr. Hogan, you are unmuted.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. Yeah, I, I just, this was a perfect segue to, uh, to this whole situation. This is the first time I'm the neighbor that is adjacent to three of the rental properties that Ezra owns. And it was just back in twenty seventeen when we moved into this property area and they were renting it out to fraternity houses. Just recently they've changed those, they've been kicked out. Now we have some, what I would say is more reputable rentals neighbors. But our concern, and it just was brought up, this is the first time I'm even being notified or, or any, hearing anything from the Ezra's regarding to their intentions behind this wooded property that's directly behind my yard. And the fact is, we're not going to tear down trees. Well, you're saying you're going to build a parking lot. And anybody with common sense looks at the property and the zones can see what's going on. It's a game of monopoly. And if the, if the county thinks it's okay to endorse this, uh, this commercial venue, then that's fine. It's your property. You can do what you want. Obviously though, as was asked earlier, nobody in the neighborhood other than the Ezra's somehow, some way knew that this property was even for sale. And that, that irritates me because I just retired from military and I was trying to settle down in a nice, quiet neighborhood. And now I'm having to deal with something like this. And the potential of this sale means, like you heard her say, not right now, but two to five years, a strip mall will go in here. And all this neighborhood will just be another overdeveloped area and will be dealing with liquor stores and who else knows, some unwanted ones. Everybody's going to move out of this place if you sell the property. I'm just telling you that right now. So, you know, just giving you residential feedback and our concerns and, and it comes down to, we live in a quiet neighborhood. We want to keep it quiet. And we don't want to see the value of our properties diminish. We already had a gigantic commercial lot, strip mall, that was created across the street from us. That's okay. It's away from our property within fair distance. But what's going to happen here within the next two to five years is exactly that. Meanwhile, there's empty commercial lots all over Wayne Township. I don't see why this should be sold. It should be kept where it is. Keep nature, preserve it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another comment from, uh, Mr. Giovanni Kalella. Mr. Kalella, you are live.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to follow up on what Ms. Julie Ezra has just said. Um, Mr. Hogan also alluded to the same, uh, point. How are you going to build a parking lot without cutting down trees? And by the way, I was out there this morning and I actually physically counted. There are over a hundred and fifty trees back there. So the environmental impact study that was done, it, it is basically a joke because it, it kind of makes it seem like a very rosy picture that this lot is perfect for development because it's useless and there's nothing there. Over a hundred and fifty trees, numerous wildlife that I can, can't even count that are there. Most of them displaced from the seven acre tract that was just, uh, redeveloped across the street. So, you know, when you say you're not going to be cutting down trees, you know, that doesn't make any sense. Number two, this lot already has fourteen parking spots. So one story, fourteen hundred square foot building that used to be a dentist's office. No one is ever there. There's a religious group that is leasing as a tenant and they're there on weekends and they used to be there in the summer. Since it got cold, we haven't seen anyone. If parking is such a concern out of the fourteen spots, they did drop a forty foot container on the back of the lot, eating up five of the spots. So if that is a concern of parking, which no one understands and no one agrees with, why are you allowing a forty foot container to sit on the back of a lot, eating up five spots? That's number two. Um, something else we also found curious. Um, the county bought this block twenty seven oh four, lot twenty three. And on June ninth, nineteen ninety three. It used to be owned by a private resident named Mr. Dinaro Campanello Junior. The county bought this lot for four hundred and fifty four thousand, one hundred dollars. It is now being sold for ninety six thousand. Granted, the jug handle was put in and that's probably why the county bought it. But minus the fifteen percent that the jug handle cuts through the original lot, that is a seventy eight percent devaluation from the original purchase price. I doubt Passaic County is in, um, uh, the process of trying to lose three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other, the last thing I, I want to make, that there was, uh, according to the Economic and Environmental Impact Report. One, and this is a quote, "One independent appraisal was commissioned to establish market value, interest in proposed property, transfer of sale to DJK." The appraisal was ordered by DJK Property and conducted by last year's assessment appraisers on June twelfth. Providing a market value of a hundred and twenty thousand. So first of all, I've never seen a Wayne property devalue by seventy eight percent. That's number one.
Sir, it's a three minute time limit and your three minutes are up right now. So
And I finished my last sentence.
Okay.
Last sentence. So I just want to say, if I can go and have my own appraiser appraise the house and then accept my appraisal value. That would be like hitting the lottery. Why Passaic County has now had their own appraiser is beyond.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We have to move on to the next person. Thank you though, for your comments. Is there anyone else? Oh, you're on mute. Duffy, you're on mute.
I'll move to close the public portion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hold call.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lazara?
Yes. Okay.
Um, could I ask a question to Mr. De Nova while we're on the topic of the public hearing?
Uh, yeah?
Yeah. Anthony, you mentioned, uh, earlier on, uh, first of all, I want to thank all the members of the public neighbors of mine who, uh, you know, participated today. You mentioned, uh, that this is part of a process. I see that we're accepting comments through December twenty second. Um, you mentioned that there would be zoning issues. Obviously if we were talking about, um, a larger project, there would be other issues around consolidation. Our regulatory authority since Hamburg Turnpike and Church are county roads. What are the, what are the steps, um, between here and any of the things that Ms. Ezra said might happen? Uh, just to reassure people of the processes that are there and the roles that, that we have and that Wayne Township have in dealing with issues like traffic safety, environmental impacts, noise mitigation, et cetera, through our regulatory authority?
Well, so we're, we're really putting the cart before the horse, right? So as I said earlier, the, the, the process that we're going through now is to sell excess property that has no, and I may have used the word value before and maybe I misspoke, but the county of Passaic has no use for that property in particular. As everyone stated here, it's a small piece of property. It's landlocked. Um, so if we sold the property at some point in time, if, uh, if, if Ms. Ezra, um, decided that she was going to try, can you hear me now? Uh, try to develop the property, uh, the first thing, anything that she would have to do is get the zone changed, right? It's residential. So that would take a, an action. And again, I'm not a land use expert, but that would take action, I believe, of both the township, uh, council and the planning board. And maybe the planning board, then the council, or it might be the council, then the planning board, but that's a two-step process. Uh, and then there would have to be, uh, if, if it were to be rezoned and they had a project and went before the Wayne Planning Board. So whether it would be, um, variances, whether it be a Board of Adjustment or Planning Board, again, couldn't tell at this point in time, but they would have to go through local approvals to get the plan approved. And then it would also have to be, again, as you stated, because it's on a county road, it would have to go to the county planning board, uh, where we would look at drainage, um, and, uh, and traffic impact.
I have something happening. What, what was the process that got us here? This was already
So again, no, yeah, no, I'm glad, I'm glad that you mentioned that because there was no for sale sign, uh, the, the way I believe, uh, it happened and if Matthew recalls, but I believe that the property owner approached us, um, the Ezra's, I should say. I believe they approached us, asked us if we would consider selling the property, um, and, and we began to talk to them. Uh, the law allows us to sell excess county property to adjacent property owners. Without, as you know, we're going into a public auction on a piece of property in Patterson in December. Um, because there were no contiguous property owners that were interested in the purchase. So we're doing a public, um, a public auction on December third for that piece of property.
Director, I just want everybody to understand it's a legal process and we follow exactly what we need to do legally. Um, so
Yeah, and I, I, again, I don't know Wayne's, uh, you know, position on this. I don't know what, you know, whether they would ever consider a zone change. I don't know. But again, the only action here before the board, and, and I understand the concerns of the property owners, uh, I, I do. But, but the action here is to sell a vacant piece of property that has, that the county has no use for. Again, it's really just more of a liability for us to have this piece of property. And to the gentleman who was talking about, you know, the appraisals, well, when we bought that piece of, when, when we had a purchase of, and this was before me. Um, but when we purchased that piece of property in nineteen ninety three for the jug handle, of course, it was a more valuable piece of property. And as everyone, you know, all the freeholders know, you have to pay for a fair market value for what a property is worth. Then the jug handle went in, it was no longer a buildable lot. So to say that, you know, it went from four hundred and fifty thousand to ninety thousand, uh, while, while on the surface might be accurate. But clearly the property has less value than when the county had to purchase it to improve Church Lane.
So through, Director, if I might, we don't, we're not going to move on this tonight. There's going to be more
No, the pub, the public comment stays open for another thirty days, I believe.
There's another public
Okay. Thank you. So I moved to close the public portion. We did that, right?
We did, yeah, yep.
Okay, we'll move on then.
You do have to close the public hearing though, Director.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move the, to adjourn the public here. A second.
Or whoever.
A roll call.
Freeholders after.
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore?
Yes.
Director Lazara?
Yes. Okay, next on our list, I'd like to invite our, uh, Health Director, Dr. Sherlyn Gungill, to give us an update on what's going on here in the county.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Micah. Next slide, please, Micah. So we are up to day, uh, two hundred and forty eight since COVID came into our county. Next slide. Um, we are still among the top five impacted counties. Um, but now there's been a change. Uh, as you know, Essex County now, uh, leads in number of cases in, in the state. Next slide. Uh, however, Passaic County still leads in cumulative incidents. Again, that is when you compare the overall population of each of the counties. So we have, we carry a higher burden of disease than any other, uh, county. And the, the, uh, the map of the counties, the map of the states is on the right. And you could see on the map, um, that our color is darkened and that is, uh, in response to the cumulative incidence rate. Next slide, please. This is what is called an Epi curve and this is what, um, uh, COVID nineteen looks like in the county so far. And you could see very clearly that, uh, And you could see very clearly that around September 30th, we started to get an increase. We were no longer flat, and as of today's ten fourteen, sorry, you can see that we are, we are pulling up a steep slope again, similar to what we saw earlier in the year. Next slide, please.
Can I just stop you, Doctor, Doctor, for a second? It's really muffled. I don't know if that's on my end or on your end, but it's, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, is this better?
Much, much better, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That was some background noise. Okay, so, Micah, could you go back one slide, please? All right, so this is the EPI curve, and this curve shows you the progress of COVID-19 since the beginning till now. You could see the two waves is very clear. The first wave occurred earlier in the year, and then you saw when we crushed the curve, and we were pretty much level for a few months. As of September into October, you could see that this wave has begun, and it's climbing very rapidly. Next slide, please. So, this is where we, we pulled up from September, beginning of September to now. Once people went back to school, we, we, we're following that piece to see how the curve develops, and you can see more clearly on, on this slide. Next slide, please. All right. The outbreaks continue in our long-term care facility, and we're seeing more and more cases there. Thankfully, we have not seen any deaths in this second wave in our long-term cares, but just about every week, we're getting more cases and more outbreaks in, in facilities that had, had no cases for several months. Next slide, please. This is the moving percent positivity. Again, you knew that at the beginning of this outbreak, we were testing people who were, who had prescriptions because they had symptoms. So, we had a very high positivity rate, and you can see where it went down dramatically as we started to test everyone regardless of whether they had, had symptoms or whether they had a prescription. Again, and from September into October, you can see, though we're still testing everyone, and a prescription is not required, the second wave again is very visible on this slide, and it continues to go up. Next slide. We continue to test. This is the, the fourth cycle. We're testing throughout the county, and even our testing numbers have skyrocketed. Last Saturday, we tested one thousand and four people, and it, it was tremendous feat. Over the last three times we tested, which were Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday last week, we tested over twenty-one hundred people. Next slide. This slide represents our at-home testing program. You could see on that, and actually, this program also has, has increased in our, in our, our testing capability over the last week. From last Monday to today, we have had eight hundred and eighty requests for tests, which is double what we had from the previous week. So, people are utilizing that service. We've expanded the use of the at-home testing program, but that coupled with more interest in it is, is showing us an increase in, in our testing. Wayne continues, and they have been at the front of this from the very beginning. They continue to be the municipality which has taken advantage of this program more than any other. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of testing throughout the county, and is to show you that we have tried to go to every municipality as long as there is capability there, so that people will have access to testing as time goes by. Next slide, please. We're seeing an increase in, in positive cases in young adults, in children. We're not seeing the spread in the schools. We're seeing the spread based on activities that are occurring outside of school, and then the students come into the school. Many of the jurisdictions have decided to revert to remote-only learning due to the increased number of cases. Next slide, please. I just want to make sure that people are aware that New Jersey Department of Health has put out a COVID Alert App. The information is on this slide, and this app, when it is on, if you are close to someone who also has the app, and that person has tested positive using Bluetooth, so it's not any G, G, GIS, GPS technology, but using Bluetooth, it'll be able to identify for you and let you know that you are close to someone who tested positive for COVID-19. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder, and I believe the Governor issued an executive order, that Thanksgiving is upon us, and I believe the number now is no more than ten people in, in, inside space. We are concerned, we're very concerned that Thanksgiving is going to be a super-spreader, and so, I just want to remind people that unless you know somebody's status and where they've been, you should try to limit your exposure to the possibility of contracting COVID-19 during the Thanksgiving season.
Your freeholders, there was just an article on NJ.com that said if you're having ten people at Thanksgiving in Passaic County, there's an eighteen percent chance one of them will have COVID.
Wow.
Yes.
And, and that number goes up.
I'd like to. Uh, we, we can address this later in the question, but I, I heard the same, but it doesn't make sense with some of the other statistics and things I'm seeing about Passaic County. I, I didn't understand where that number came from.
Yeah, I don't, I saw the article too, and I'm not sure how they came to that, that number.
Because our, our posit, our positivity rate is not the highest state, and we don't have, you know, we're not the highest county in terms of, of, of infections, so I don't really understand how we could have the highest.
Well, 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 again, though, if you look at the slide that Dr. Gungill, if you want to go back to that, where, again, we don't have the, the highest number of cases, right? But just use Burton County as an example. They have twice as many people as Passaic County has, right? So, again, if you look at that slide that Dr. Gungill shows.
So, so this, this slide explains that though we do not have the highest number, so this is our raw data. So, we don't have the highest number, but based on our population, we have, if all the populations were equal, we would have the highest number of cases, right? So, so that's why.
So, basically, the density, the density of cases is basically the highest, like a population density type.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we should pay attention. CDC is saying, watch what you're doing with Thanksgiving. I think we should pay attention to this, you know?
And, and just, and just, you know, one step further in that same article, if there's twenty-five attendees, the likelihood goes up to forty percent.
Yeah.
So, again, I know that, I know that, you know, everyone loves Thanksgiving, myself included, and, you know, it's a wonderful holiday to spend with family, but again, I think we have to just caution people to try to limit, you know, the, the numbers of people that they're having. Not easy, but again, we are in the midst of, you know, I, I don't know whether we call it a second wave continuation of the first wave or a third wave. I, I don't know what we're in, but we're in it, whatever it is.
Indeed.
Thanks, Tony. You're right. Absolutely right.
All right, next slide, please. All right, so this is just a reminder that, you know, we still have to continue with what we were doing before. We have, you know, I, I say it every time, I, I keep this slide on there, but, but I have to keep it there because it still is important for us to do the very basic things of wearing a mask, of covering our cough, or, you know, washing our hands, those things. They're basic things we all learned to, before even kindergarten, and they've been proven to protect us. There was an article that, that was, that CDC sent at the end of the day, and I haven't gotten the chance to read it yet, but it's saying that the mask-wearing is the most important piece of our response to COVID-19, and so, we need to continue to share that, that message. Next slide. Okay, I just wanted to share one last thing is that we have been actively engaged with the State Department of Health regarding the vaccination program going forward. We were told that by the end of January next year, we have to open a pod which will be providing vaccinations to our residents, and we have, there's a whole phased-in program which we have to adhere to. And this is in conjunction with the Department of Health as well as CDC. We get the directives from the CDC, the DOH, and so, throughout the whole state, we're all talking about how are we going to do it? What is it going to look like? And identifying places if we do not have that, which we already do, looking at MOAs that are already in place, or updating them so that we'll be ready. And there are a lot of technology that we're working on operationally to make that happen.
They haven't decided on which vaccine they're looking at, right?
So, they gave us, in, in one of our calls today, we had a conversation about both the Pfizer one and the Moderna one. We were told information regarding how we'll be receiving the vaccines, what kind of, you know, quantities and vials, and I believe that the Pfizer one, excuse me, we'd be receiving it, I think it's five thousand, comes in a crate, and it's five dose vials, which we have to now use normal saline solution to, to work with that, whereas the Moderna one, there is no reconstitution required, and it will come in ten dose vials. So, there are a lot of, of little, of pieces that we have to identify and put together before we could make this happen, but, but just so you know, there's a lot of activity going on right now about making this happen.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Gungill?
Yeah, Madam Director, if you don't mind. So, quick question regarding the vaccine deployment. Do we need anything special in order to prepare ourselves for the vaccine deployment? In terms of, I was seeing that the Pfizer one has to be kept at extremely cold temperatures underneath a certain type of refrigeration or freezer. Are we set up to, to deploy on a mass level? And if not, who are our partners? What type of preparation are we doing for deploying the vaccines?
So, so the way we, the way we understand it, based on these conversations, is that most of the hospitals have that capability to have that negative sixty-two or negative eighty-two degree temperature, that Fahrenheit, that, that we need to have. We were also told that if we were to receive the vials from, from Pfizer, that, I'm sorry, Moderna is the one that has, which, I'm sorry, yes, Pfizer, that we will also receive certain amount of pellets that, what is that called? The dry ice pellets, and they, they told us it's a specific type, and that they will be deploying it to the pod itself, so that it'll be coming from the manufacturer and not from the stockpile, so that you'll be able to, to do the work right away. I believe they also mentioned that it would, because it will come in a thermally-approved packaging, that we'll be able to, to hold it for, I want to say, four or five days, and then beyond that, we have to use specific dry ice. I believe that the DOH is in conversation with corporations that produce dry ice, so that there is a statewide contract for dry ice, so that we, each county, will not have to go into that agreement, that it'll already be in place. But that is a concern. Last week, I had to submit several reports to the state, one of which was to identify all of the pods in Passaic County, and I believe we have six pods through the different health departments, and that report had to identify what our resources were in terms of refrigeration, freezer, and the super-cool freezer, and no one had the super-cool freezer capability in Passaic County. Again, that's why the state is talking about having that conversation with the hospitals, because they might be the only entities that have that capability. On an earlier conversation, the CDC had told the links agencies, which are the county health agencies, that we would not, we were not to concern ourselves about purchasing any of those resources, because they'll, they'll make it so that we will not have to go into that expense, because that would be a short-term, a huge expense, and once we, you know, get through the next six to twelve months, we may not have that kind of need. So, they're trying everything to make sure that these counties throughout the country don't have to go into that kind of expense.
I want to just follow up with that. We, we do still have, Tony, and again, I'm not sure how much money we have left over from the CARES Act money, but if there's anything left that we need to purchase in terms of deploying the vaccine, is that also a possibility in, in response to COVID as well? Like, so, if, if we needed to get additional pods or, you know, to, to get additional equipment for deploying the vaccines, can we do that with the COVID money that we have left over, the CARES Act money?
That would be eligible, yes.
Okay, and, and do we have a need for anything between you and Charlene? Are you guys talking?
Uh, actually.
We, we never, we never talk. We don't talk to each other. She's sick of me, and I'm not sick of her. Yeah, listen, freeholders, I will tell you that, you know, typical to, you know, even when we were putting the testing together, this is very fluid. Every phone call that you have, you're learning something new, and, and again, I think because the state and everyone else is learning something new. But just like testing, I can tell you that Passaic County will be prepared to administer vaccines when, when we get them.
Anthony, I think that you and Charlene and the entire team have been ahead of, as much as one can be, the curve with this virus, and I have a hundred percent confidence that if anything needs to be done, you will be one of the first ones to do it, as you have been since it started.
Yeah, listen, we'll, we'll be prepared. Right now, there's just a lot of information, and the information changes pretty rapidly.
Right.
It does.
I mean, a couple of weeks ago, you know, nobody was talking about a vaccine. Now, we're talking about a vaccine, so, you know, it, it's all good, and to the extent that we're going to make these decisions as fast as we have to make these decisions, we'll, we'll make them. I, I could promise you that, that we will be ahead of the curve.
There's a lot coming out daily. I mean, Moderna's efficacy now is supposedly ninety-four point five percent, supposed to ninety. It's got to be stored at, I think, it's either minus four, minus five degrees below zero, so it's less, less cold than the, than the Pfizer. But Pfizer is putting together an entire fleet of ways of delivering things that, you know, they're going to be ahead of the curve for every vaccine that's out there in terms of a delivery system, so.
And again, Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also going to be a protocol as to who gets administered vaccines first. So, at least on the earlier calls, it was our frontline workers, you know, healthcare professionals, police officers, fire, ENT, right? Those who are, are out there, so, y, y, you know, it's, but, but we will be prepared. I, I can promise you that. We will be prepared.
The good news is, I think there'll be several vaccines out there that are going to be, you know, have some efficacy, so I think, I think, pray that we're at the light at the edge of the tunnel at this point, so let's see where it goes, but I think we're in great shape.
Let's hope so.
Well, Tony, thanks to your leadership and Dr. Gungill's leadership, we were ahead of the curve on the testing and deploying that, I think in comparison to most other counties, and so. And so uh, you know, you have all, all of our faith and um, belief that we'll be ahead of the curve in deployment of the vaccine. Um, if I could just ask Dr. Gungil um, a question that came up in terms of contact tracing. You know, that, that um, you know, people will get calls and it's, it's almost inevitable because of the number of people who will get infected. Um, and, and you know, whether they're, they're vulnerable or not. Um, if you get a call about contact tracing and you were told that you have been exposed to someone who is Co- COVID positive, what do you believe? What, what do you believe is the, is, is the proper procedure for somebody like that? Like, i- if I, you know, just told, you know, you've been exposed, you know, should I go in for a rapid test? Should I, should I go in for a regular test? Um, do I have to quarantine for 14 days? Or if the test comes back negative, can I quarantine for less? Um, you know, these are things, it's because it's, it's unfortunately, because of the number of people infected, the people who are quote unquote exposed is huge. So it's almost, it's almost um, impossible to, to everybody of those people to quarantine for 14 days without, you know, without tests and all those other things. So I just wanted to clarify that question.
Okay, thank you. So let's just see how it goes. So I, let's say I contract uh, COVID-19. And um, for some reason I went to get tested and I tested positive. My information is entered into the state system, CDRSS, and also COMCARE, which is that new system that only extracts all of the um, the COVID-19 cases. My local health department where I live will also get access to my records. And they will, it, they will begin the case investigation. That investigation is going to be, to ask me, they will contact me as the patient and have, there's a series of questions that have to be asked. Once they ask me those questions, part of what I'm going to do is to identify where I was, who I believe I was with um, that met or that meets the case definition of um, direct contact. So that person that you're talking about, who I will identify, let's say it is my, my cousin. I will say I was with my cousin, we were at a party and uh, we were talking, we were drinking, whatever. And once I identify that person, the case investiga- investigator or contact tracer will reach out to that cousin of mine, Jessica. Jessica will get a phone call or an email or a text, depending on what uh, they use to contact her. And she will be questioned, hopefully she'll answer the, the call. And the questions are going to include, when was she in my presence? How long does she believe she was there? And so the, the quarantine period for Jessica will be dependent on when, what date she was exposed to me. It will be dependent on whether or not I was symptomatic at that time. And we will count the days of quarantine based on those types of criteria. So the, the incubation period is two to 14 days, but it all depends on the exposure and the symptoms. Um, the person, me, who was positive, I will have to isolate again, based on when I was exposed to whomever I was exposed to and whether or not I have symptoms. So each case is different, but it, they're basic tenants. And the basic tenants are days of exposure, um, time of exposure, meaning how long were you exposed? And whether or not you're symptomatic. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, but where does testing play into it? So let's say, I, I'm, I'm most concerned about, it's not just with families, but in workplaces, right? Because potentially if you say one person in the workplace has um, is, 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 is sick, then basically almost everybody else in that workplace um, is now exposed, quote unquote exposed. So potentially a whole office could be uh, in quarantine. Um, and, and, and so where does testing play into it in terms of, if I've been quote unquote exposed, but I have no symptoms, should I go get a test? And then what does that mean in terms of my quarantine?
Okay, so because everyone works in the same office does not mean that everyone was exposed. There are specific criteria regarding exposure. Um, according to the CDC, it's 15 minutes um, and within six feet. New Jersey has kept to the original idea of 10 minutes uh, within six feet. No one is wearing a mask, there are all kinds of criteria. Um, does that mean that everyone who is in my office on the days that I was there? Does that mean that everyone was in direct contact with me? No, everyone will not have been in, in direct contact with me. Some people might have, you've been in another office or whatever. So it does not mean that. Do they need to be tested? I think every workplace was supposed to have worked on some kind of a policy uh, to put into place. In some cases, it might be that a test might be a good idea. In some places, it may not. Um, if they are not symptomatic, if they were not in contact with, with the patient, then they will not need to have uh, to be tested to return. It also depends on what type of business that they're in. If they're working with vulnerable populations, they may need to, to, to be tested. Or, so there's, there are, there's a lot of moving parts with the, whether or not a person is tested before they come back to work. Um, the CDC had talked earlier on about the importance of testing as a tool to return to work. But later, as time developed, they talked about the time piece, with the two to 14 days with symptom development and, and uh, you know, uh, daily uh, symptom checking and those things. Those things are also important pieces of, of the whole response. So it depends on very, you know, many things. In other words, there is not blanket, yes, the person was in your office, yes, you need to get tested. That's not, that's not the protocol, no.
So, so basically, it, the short answer is there is no short answer. And it, and it's very dependent on the, yeah, circumstances question. Yeah, and so I, I mean, that's just something I've seen where people are throwing out 14 days, 14 days, but it, it shouldn't be a blanket um, for every case.
Okay. So yeah, so for example, if I have symptoms on a Sunday, I get tested on Thursday. Um, when we, when we count the, the isolation period, you go back to when you were symptomatic. So it would seem as if it's only nine days that the person is isolated. But it, again, it's, there's a lot of, yeah. You have to take a lot of things into, into consideration to come up to the uh, the time required.
Thank you, Dr. Gungil.
You're welcome.
If there's no, anybody has any more questions, I guess we can move on to the freeholder reports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gungil.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes of October 27th, 2020?
Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Pro call.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Uffey.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lazara.
Yes. Um, move on to freeholder reports. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate my colleagues, I can hold the best, if we hold you, James, on your reelection this few weeks ago.
We got reelected?
Yay!
We're so glad that you guys are back on our team.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd also like to just reiterate what I said earlier about Mayor Dunleavy. Um, this, his passing was a shock to all of us. And I know we all know him on a personal level and we, he's ju- he was just such a great guy. My heart goes out to his family and his friends and the residents of Bloomingdale. We all pray for them and you know that he's looking down on us right now. That's it. Uh, free, uh, freeholder Lapore?
Uh, thank you, Director. Um, the Public Works Committee has had a very, very busy schedule. Matter of fact, uh, of the 103 resolutions before the freeholders, 42 of them have been generated by the Public Works Committee. And I just want to uh, uh, thank the, uh, all the members of the committee for all the hard work. Uh, this was a, a pretty tough uh, um, venue here to, to, to get by. Um, so I asked my colleagues for their support of these 42 resolutions and that's all I have. I'm done.
Freeholder actor.
Uh, if it's okay with you, Director, I would like to defer to Freeholder Bartlett, who I know has a, a, an exciting announcement regarding transportation dollars, uh, which I wanted to um, have him uh, announce and then I, I'd speak afterwards, if that's okay.
Great, um, thank you, Asad, through you, Director. I'm actually gonna start with something different very quickly and then uh, move on to the exciting news for Patterson. Last Friday, our United States Senator Cory Booker, who was also reelected earlier this month, uh, hosted a meeting with representatives of all 21 counties through NJAC, the New Jersey Association of Counties. And I had the privilege of representing our county in that meeting. The topic was the CARES Act, uh, and in particular what county's needs are gonna be going forward. Um, and there were a couple of key themes that emerged, all of which I think are gonna resonate with you from all that we've heard about, one of which is the issue of time. The fact that the money we've received so far is supposed to be spent by the end of December. And also very specifically, because the US Senate is holding up any further assistance, the fact that there's a period between January 1st and January 21st, when uh, uh, Joe Biden will be inaugurated President of the United States, where there may be no funding at all and no authorization to spend the funds that we may have received but not yet expended. Uh, the Senator is working on a fix to that as well as working with colleagues to pass either uh, the SMART Act that Senator Menendez and others introduced or otherwise uh, increase the funding that we, uh, counties and probably other localities, municipalities will receive from the federal government going forward to continue needed relief on COVID. Uh, another theme that emerged was flexibility. I think um, uh, when we look at the list uh, that uh, Anthony has shown us a couple of times of all the different ways in which CARES Act money is getting spent here in Passaic County, we see an example of that. It's everything from uh, vehicles to buildings to services to uh, food, to, to grants, to business, including one that we launched this morning, uh, rental assistance for small business. Um, the ability to use those funds, uh, that come from the federal government, both CARES Act and whatever comes later, as flexibly as possible. And in particular, a number of different places identified needs that I think a lot of you uh, probably see here in our county as well. Uh, one is around internet infrastructure, particularly in urban and very rural communities. The uh, the same way that electrification and telephone were an issue uh, half a century or more ago. Uh, internet access for students that are having to learn remotely uh, is an important part of that. Also educational technology in general, the notion of getting kids the tools they need to be able to learn from homeless, so many of our children are right now. Uh, and the other issue is to make sure that the resources that are flowing to businesses are also flowing to nonprofits, which are also employers in our communities, which are also entities that need to, for example, pay business rent, but can't right now because uh, they're not included in that definition of who we can give business rental assistance to. So um, Senator Booker, Senator Menendez and our representatives in Congress are gonna be working on that in the months and weeks ahead. And hopefully we'll have good news to report back. Um, as Asad previewed, we also have some very exciting federal funding news out of uh, my work on behalf of the county at NJTPA, the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. Uh, the NJTPA board last week um, cleared funding in the amount of 8.56 million dollars in federal grants that are gonna support a dramatic transformation to the streetscape along Lake, Lakeview Avenue in Patterson, all the way from Market Street to Crooks Avenue, including a new traffic circle right there by Route 80. Pedestrian safety and bicycle safety improvements throughout the length. Aesthetic improvements, including a center area that's gonna be very park-like. Uh, that is one of the 10 most dangerous corridors in our county for uh, vehicle pedestrian accidents. And the fact that we can make that safer uh, and make that a place that's more pleasant for people right there in the neighborhood and do it all with federal funding rather than out of the county tax dollar is a big win for us. And uh, it's something that I know that Freeholder Actor in particular and our friends at Eastside um, uh, Neighbors Association, uh, Eastside Homeland Association have been advocates for. And it's a big piece of good news for us here. That project's gonna move forward in the years ahead. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Director. If I could, uh, if I could just uh, have my report now. I, I wanna thank Freeholder Bartlett for his leadership uh, on NJTPA, where I believe he's now ascended to the vice chairmanship. Um, and we're, we're grateful for his work there for many years, uh, which brought a lot, back a lot of funding and, and for now, uh, his position allows us to move on projects like this, which, um, this was one of the first things, uh, actually back when I lived in uh, the South Patterson neighborhood. Um, I was brought to, um, it was brought to my attention um, that there were, um, there were homes there that had like actual damage. You could see actual damage from cars that had driven off the road and into homes uh, because of the amount of speeding that's happening on Lakeview Avenue. Um, especially late at nights, on the weekends, uh, people will have uh, almost drag-like type races uh, around there. Um, and thank God, no one, we haven't had any fatalities or serious injuries yet. Uh, but uh, when I saw that, I, I knew it was an issue. We, we brought it to our county engineering department, who's done a great job. Um, Michael Saccatos, among others, uh, who has brought a great job of uh, developing this plan. Uh, we've had a number of public meetings. I wanna recognize uh, Mayor Andre Seiya, who at the time was a sixth ward councilman. And also Alab Delziz, who's the current sixth ward councilman, uh, who brought this to my attention. Uh, and together we brought together uh, public input. And uh, we came up with a plan, um, as Freeholder Bartlett brought up. But quite honestly, I didn't, I thought it would take a while and different stages to develop the funding to do this. And the fact that we were able to get all the funding uh, in, in one shot, uh, we think it's enough money uh, to get this done, both for Lakeview Avenue and the traffic circle which connects to Route 80 uh, and, 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 and other highways. Um, uh, it's, that's a fantastic thing for that neighborhood and for the community and for Patterson. And there's gonna be a lot more public input. It's gonna be a while before any construction goes into it, as I've told folks. Um, so there's a lot more to be developed and known about it, but I'm very excited about it. Um, and this is the kind of thing that uh, excites me about county government, our ability to work with the fed, federal, the federal government, the state government and down with our municipalities. We're, we're really at a great spot to be able to do that, county government, so I'm really grateful. Um, if I could just make one more point during my field report. I wanna recognize, obviously I wanna congratulate my colleagues who've been reelected. Uh, and all those who were reelected at, at, at the local level. Uh, of course, we're, we're happy with, with our president-elect and Senator Booker coming back. But I just wanna recognize uh, the folks who made it happen uh, in terms of the election. Uh, 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 our governor Phil Murphy, uh, along with our Secretary, Secretary of State Tahisha Way, um, who really came up in the middle of a pandemic, uh, incredibly difficult circumstances, uh, came up with the best plan possible to allow folks to vote, uh, to, to vote in a safe um, and responsible way um, and to have options and how they vote and for their vote to be secure. Um, and I wanna recognize locally our great county clerk, Daniel Ireland Imhoff, uh, our superintendent of elections, Shona Mack, uh, and our uh, Board of Elections, uh, led by John Curry and, and, and staff there. Um, uh, from top to bottom, um, uh, you know, our elections were run fairly. Um, they were secure, uh, people had the opportunity and they were done responsibly, deeply. And you know, whether we're talking about New Jersey or nationally, you know, people, it's very easy for people to criticize government, to say ballots are being stolen, the dead people are voting, uh, uh, you know, duplicate names, et cetera, et cetera. Except when you ask them for the proof, then you can find almost nothing. We had tens of millions of people vote in this country. Um, maybe you can find one, two, three, four, five instances of issues. Um, but there is nothing that the private sector or the government does that is more impressive than our democracy in counting votes and counting elections. And it's one of the best things uh, in terms of, um, in terms of effectiveness that the gov- that government does, not one of the worst. And so I think it's important that we give credit to those who make the, that election possible. Um, and that we reiterate that uh, it was done responsibly and uh, effectively. So I wanna applaud all the officials at the state and local level and our county level who made it happen.
Thank you, Freeholder. Uh, Freeholder Best.
Thank you, uh, Freeholder Director. Trying to get my uh, video here, there we go. Uh, again, I just wanted to uh, thank everybody for their support for uh, Uh, again, I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody for their support for, uh, Bruce and myself. I was a little hesitant about putting a comment on, uh, social media about, uh, us winning yet because there is still counting going on, but I, I guess with the, uh, leads we have now, we, we could say that we won. So thank you, everyone who came out and voted. Um, I also would like to thank the people, uh, on the other side of the aisle who we ran against, our opponents, uh, for running a clean and fair campaign, especially, um, in light of COVID. This has been a unique campaign season, one that, uh, none of us have ever expected or, or wanted to go through. The focus without question has been on, um, working through and, and hopefully recovering from this pandemic and not on, um, you know, knocking on doors and, and going crazy. But we did have an outstanding team that we worked with on the county side, so I wanna thank all of them for, for doing the very hard work in a unique time and a unique, uh, situation. Um, I also want to, uh, again, commend, uh, Freeholder Bartlett and Freeholder actor for their work on the Lakeview Ave project that connects Patterson and Clifton. Uh, I lived in that part of town as well, and the residents would come to me and, and complain. And, uh, thankfully, we have Freeholder Bartlett, who ascended to a position in the NJTPA where he was able to, uh, bring home the bacon for, uh, the county of Passaic and for, for Patterson and Clifton. So I wanna thank, uh, John and Assad for their hard work. And also, uh, Councilman Abdelaziz, uh, in the sixth ward of Patterson. Uh, Councilman Abdelaziz was also, uh, one of the chief sponsors of a resolution in the city of Patterson to have both Eastside and Westside parks included into the county park system. Um, it gave the mayor, uh, the ability to negotiate with the county. Um, I think that there has been an initial meeting, but there's probably gonna be several other meetings to talk about this. Um, once a, uh, presentation or some negotiation is done on behalf of our administration, uh, here in the county and the city's administration, uh, I'm looking forward to having, uh, my colleagues support that. I think that this will be a huge asset for, uh, not just the city of Patterson, but also the entire county of Passaic, to have two historic jewels be brought back to their natural beauty, um, and to have additional programming, uh, for, for the entire county to benefit from. Uh, so I, I encourage, when the time comes and the negotiations happen between, um, our administration and the cities, that, that we get everybody's support. Thank you, Freeholder Director.
Thank you. Uh, Freeholder Duffy. You're on mute. You're muted.
You sure you want me unmuted?
Mike, can you mute him?
I wanna congratulate, uh, both our colleagues for, uh, for winning, uh, another three years. It's great to have them on the team. We have a, we have a phenomenal team here. We really do. I also want a shout-out to Don Levy family, uh, how sad it is, not only for that family, but for the county as well. He was a stand-up guy. He was important to all of us throughout the county, and he was a, a mayor. It was, you know, for mayors. I'm not, I'm never crazy about mayors. It's the mayor, ex-mayor, Lapore will tell you. But, uh, he was, he was a great man. He really was, uh, well, kidding aside, he, he was a gentleman's gentleman, and will, uh, be sorely missed. Uh, and that being said, um, we have quite a few, um, items on the planning board, and, uh, we had a, uh, Deborah, uh, Hopman was part of this, and thank God we have her on board. It's, uh, Passaic County Emergency Assistance Grant Program for Passaic County Business Community. COVID-nineteen has seriously impacted our business community and our residents. Many, many have lost their businesses, and, and our residents have lost their jobs. Uh, this program, this grant program, it started today, yesterday, rather, uh, not today, Monday. This grant program will provide much-needed financial assistance to companies by provoking, providing a grant to help them pay their rent and enable them to continue operating in these troubling times, and employing local residents. So I, uh, I urge everyone, there's no employee size limit to receive the, uh, grant. It's a grant. It's not a loan, and hope, hopefully, every business in Passaic County will look into it. That being said, it's crazy times. We'll get through it. I wanna commend our health department and also our, our leadership here in the administration. Um, you know, Mr. De novo, Mr. Jordan, and the rest of the staff, we're, we're blessed. Uh, I can say this all sincerity, we're, we're blessed as county to have them, uh, lead us. And, and yourself as Director. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna mute now.
Oh, no. Freeholder James.
Yes, uh, I have to thank Dr. Gungil again. We have, um, a situation that developed across the street at our Board of Social Services. Um, it's a COVID outbreak, and I have to say that she was key, uh, not only her, uh, but she was key in trying to get a grip on that situation across the street, which we have. They're, uh, under quarantine and lockdown for a two-week period, uh, depending upon testing, and, uh, Steve Orsini went over with his crew today and disinfected the building. That's gonna be done again, uh, next week, uh, before they go. But they're out until right after, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday. But Dr. Gungil has been key in supporting the, the lockdown, first of all, and second of all, providing the testing so that employees can get back to work. As you know, that we have a responsibility to the people that, uh, need the services over there. Most of the employees are working from home, but a hundred and ten of them were working in the building. Uh, and until they get tested, they will not be back, but, uh, she is making sure that that, uh, that happens in a, in a timely fashion. Um, we have position, we have procedures in place that Mr. De novo and, and, uh, Charlene Gungil have put in place, and Steve Orsini is a part of that. We have the proper response when somebody has a COVID case in this county. And I have to say that, thanks to them, uh, this was handled in a very rapid fashion. You know, Steve, like I said, went over and disinfected these, they're there tonight, actually, still. Um, but, you know, we need to be able to report these things on time to the county administrator, and I don't care if it's an independent board or not. You know, we have a responsibility to all the employees in Passaic County, and, uh, our administrator, along with our, uh, uh, health officer, have put in place things to track it, to make sure that it doesn't spread, to handle it quickly. You haven't seen any major, you know, um, mega-spread, uh, you know, events that happen in this county because of the things that they've put in place. So I have to thank them all because we really are ahead of the curve on other counties, uh, and certainly in a lot of places in the country. So thank you again, Tony. Thanks, uh, Dr. Gungil. Uh, you've made my life a little easier. I had a hell of a weekend, but, uh, we're climbing out of it, and it's really because of you guys. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. There's, uh, no communications. The oral portion, can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
I'll move that.
I'll send it.
Second.
Roll call.
Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Uh, we'll give you a minute or two to collect any, anything that's coming through the, uh, website.
Okay, uh, Director, on the, uh, Facebook Live, we have, uh, Leanna Marie Romano. Uh, will the cut, cut-down trees in Goffelbrook Park be replaced? And then, if we can wait a couple minutes, uh, minutes, see if there's any other comments. There is no comments at Passaic County at, I'm sorry, participants@passaiccountynj.org. There is no, no emails there.
I'll move to the closed public portion.
Lou, didn't you send comments today by email?
You know what? Thank you. Uh, I apologize.
Director, I apologize.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. De novo. I have two, uh, two emails, uh, that I did receive, and I apologize. Sorry. Uh, first one is, uh, two are from, uh, Mayor Andre Seiya of Patterson. Dear Freeholders, with the recent development taking place in Patterson and the potential for more, I believe that is an opportune time to revisit commissioning a study to close down the jail down. The redevelopment of our downtown district is critical as we work to complete six projects using a hundred and thirty million in state cred, state tax credits. Moreover, optimizing land use and giving people something more aesthetically appealing to view after exiting Route nineteen and entering our historic city is virtually, um, virtually important. However, I believe a closure can be accomplished in a manner that will save jobs and, and, and I exhort you to save as many jobs as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts, and I would appreciate your serious consideration, my suggestions for a study. Signed, Andre Seiya, Mayor of Patterson. Second email from, from the Mayor Seiya. Dear Freeholders, on behalf of the city of Patterson and the, and the Patterson Public School District, I would like to thank you for your additional five point two million in CARES Act money. The aforementioned funding will help us slow the spread of virus and ensure that our schools, students, and staff will be safe when, when our buildings are reopened for in-person learning. We are profoundly grateful for your support. Signed, Mayor Andre Seiya, City of Patterson.
Anything else? That's it?
That, that is it, Director.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore. Director Lozare.
Yes. Um, Anthony, can you address the question about the park?
Yeah. See, so I'm, I'm guessing that she's talking about the, uh, landscape project that's going on at the Ray House. So we did take a large tree down in front of the Ray House, and yes, is part of the, um, part of the project, there will be tree, uh, trees, um, planted.
Oh, that's great.
I, I don't know of any other tree work, so I'm, I'm assuming that that's what she meant.
I, I would assume that, too. Okay. And we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Um, council, do we have any additions? Any amendments?
Uh, yes, Director. Um, through you, there are five late starters and then one resolution that needs to be removed. It's, as it's being replaced by a corrective resolution. So, um, K, K seventy-four, um, needs to be removed. Um, and then the late starters are K one oh four, a resolution for award of contract to East Coast Elevator LLC for elevator repair or refurbished elevator at the Courthouse Annex located at seventy-seven Hamilton, Hamilton Street in Patterson, New Jersey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash six point one at SEC. K one oh five, a resolution awarding co, construction and geotechnical on-call testing services for the Goffelbrook Park Improvements and Rifle Camp Park Improvements in the boroughs of Hawthorne and Woodland Park in the state of New Jersey as per bid SP nineteen zero one three pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash twenty-four at SEC. K one oh six, resolution authorizing contract to KS Engineers for the inspection of various Passaic County pedestrian bridges in the county of Passaic, um, New Jersey, state of New Jersey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash five one AI. K one oh seven, a resolution authorizing a contract modification for the on-call testing for the replacement of the Terrace Avenue Covert number sixteen hundred dash four two one over tributary to Molly Anne's Brook in the borough of North Halden per bid SP nineteen zero one three pursuant to NJSA forty-eight eleven dash sixteen point six at SEC. K one oh eight, resolution authorizing a contract modification for Siber Richardson and Weisberg Engineering and Architecture for the elevator modernization refurbishment project pursuant to NJAC five colon eleven dash six at SEC. And finally, K one oh nine, a resolution awarding construction and geotechnical on-call testing services to tectonic engineering for the North Halden Avenue Covert number sixteen hundred dash three thirty over Squaw Brook in the borough of North Halden in the state of New Jersey as per bid SP nineteen zero one three pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash four at SEC.
Um, reason to go to executive session?
There is no reason to go into executive session, Director, and I'll just remind all the freeholders, if there's any resolution on the consent agenda that you would like voted on individually, please make a motion through to Director.
Director?
Yes.
By me, I'd like to, uh, vote on one hundred and one oh one separately.
Okay, go. Okay.
One motion to remove K seventy-four and add the late starters, and then one motion to have those two resolutions voted on.
So there's a motion, uh, have a motion to remove K seventy-four and add K one oh four to one oh nine.
I'll move on.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay. Who, uh, who seconded that? That was Bartlett?
Yeah, there were a couple of us.
Yeah. Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Freeholder Duffy.
Yes, I'm sorry. Here we go.
Now you're on.
Yep. James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Now, uh, can I have a motion to pull K one hundred? Uh, oh, no, vote separately on K one hundred and K one oh one.
I'll move it.
Roll call.
Yep. Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. James.
Well.
Deputy Director Lapore.
No.
Director Lozare.
Yes.
Thank you, Director.
What direction are we going in now with one hundred and one oh one? We're not gonna, are we pulling those?
No, they passed.
Oh, okay.
Nobody, the rest of you already got it.
Oh, okay. Okay, can I have a motion to accept consent agenda? K one to K, K one oh nine, with the exception of seventy-four, one hundred, and one oh one.
I'm good.
Second.
Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion to move the personnel agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Have a motion to move the bills.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Freeholders actor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Freeholder Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Freeholder James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Second.
Freeholders actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Freeholder James.
Yes.